Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's election forum. This is the Democratic primary for the position of Pueblo County Commissioner. We'll have two forums this evening, and we welcome you here tonight. My name is Steve Henson. I'm the managing editor at the Pueblo Chieftain. That's one of the sponsors of tonight's events, along with Pueblo Community College's Center for New Media and the Governance Task Force of the 2020 Commission. We'll go over a little bit of the ground rules first, so you'll know what's going on tonight as far as the timing and so forth. Each candidate will have four minutes to introduce themselves to you, to tell you why that you think that they deserve your vote. Then we'll begin a series of questions and answers, and each one will have two minutes to answer those, and then also a one-minute rebuttal if needed or wanted. And then, once we get close to about, oh, 50, 55 minutes or so into it, then we will do closing remarks from each candidate, and that will be three-minute closing remarks. We flipped the coin, and Buffy McFadden won that she elected to close the event tonight. So we'll begin with opening remarks from Garrison Ortiz.
Good evening. I would first like to thank the Pueblo Chieftain and Pueblo Community College for hosting this forum tonight. I would also like to thank Mr. Henson for moderating the forum. I am here tonight because of a lack of accountability, a disconnect with elected county officials, inefficiency in the use of tax-paying dollars, and a lack of long-range planning in the District Two seat of the County Commission. I am here tonight because I hear the call of Pueblo County for change. I hear that need for change. I know that need for change because I am born, raised, and educated right here in Pueblo, Colorado. I was raised by a strong mother and grandparents who instilled in me the values of hard work, integrity, and the importance of a quality education. In fact, the location of tonight's forum has very special meaning to me because I once walked these halls as a student. After graduating from Public Community College, I received the Kane Scholarship to attend Colorado State University-Pueblo, where I earned my MBA. As for experience, I have worked as a senior consultant for a worldwide consulting firm contracting all across North America. From Mexico City to Canada and across the greater United States, I have delivered budgeting, forecasting, and reporting solutions for premier private and public sector organizations. I've been entrusted to work on multimillion-dollar budgets to over $1.5 billion and have led highly diverse teams in several high-stake environments. And prior to my consulting career, I worked for a local nonprofit organization where I performed perhaps the most rewarding work that I will ever have the pleasure of doing. I worked as a case manager for Public Crisis Services, where I fought every day for victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. Now, I'm not here tonight to dazzle you with a long political record, but I don't think that is what Pueblo County is looking for this election. Because political records speaking for themselves have led our community down its current path. I think we have heard enough political jargon without real principle. It's quite simple. If we want a better Pueblo County, then we need better leadership. Tonight is not about who has the longest resume. It's about who has the work ethic and the values to move Pueblo County forward. And this local election, believe it or not, is not entirely about politics, or who can give the best scripted answers tonight to gain political points, or who can get the most oohs and ahs tonight over the other. It's about our community. It's about Pueblo County. What I bring to you tonight is a very simple promise. I promise to show up to work on time all year long. I promise to be honest and transparent in all that I do. And I promise to listen more and to talk less because I know that I serve you, not the other way around. You see, this election marks a pivotal point in Pueblo politics because before you tonight sit two candidates that could not be any more different. From our age and our experience to our temperament and leadership style, we are different in every way. And those stark contrasts will be on display here tonight. Tonight is about electing hard-working, intelligent, and caring people who are running because they want to serve their community. And that is exactly why I am running, because I want to serve. And if elected, I will serve you with passion. I will serve you with commitment, and I will serve you with integrity. And with routine absences to BLCC work sessions, a large disconnect with elected county officials, and a lack of long-range planning, we need new and fresh leadership on the County Commission, and we need it now more than ever. My name is Garrison Ortiz, and I ask for the opportunity to earn your vote for County Commissioner in District Two. Thank you.
And now, we'll have opening remarks from LeAnn Buffy McFadden.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. And I think Buffy works pretty well. So does Commissioner. I, too, want to thank the PCC Center for New Media. We've had quite a fine relationship over the years, the Pueblo Chieftain as well, and the 2020 Governor's Task Force, who are leading the timers this evening and keeping us on track. I'm very excited to be here. I'm excited to see so many Democrats out in Pueblo County. I am a Commissioner. I've been a Commissioner the last four years, but the best title ever is "Mom." Over the last few years, I've had the opportunity to raise my daughter, who's seven, and goes to elementary school in Pueblo West in District 70, and my son, thank goodness, is like any teenager, he doesn't always listen to his mom, just graduated South High School. I know, there are people in the room who'd love to clap for South High School. You know, this has been a long journey for me. Sometimes it feels short. I started working when I was 15 years old. I picked tomatoes, eggplant, and cantaloupe right alongside migrant workers at Morata Farms, and I learned very quickly how hard work can be. Those migrant workers kicked my tail. And my mother told me, because she expected me to go to college, and so did my dad, that you better figure out a way to pay for it. I decided to run track. And with that determination, I earned a Division One Scholarship to St. John's University in New York City. And off I went, eight hours away, to St. John's University. I don't think my mother slept a wink all those year, that year, when I was in New York City. And guess what? I didn't fit in. I'm not a New York City gal. But Adam State recruited me. And at 19 years old, I came across the country by myself to Adam State, which is now Adam State University. I ran my way through college, through a bachelor's degree and the first student to earn their master's degree straight through in the Master of Counseling program. I call Colorado my home. I'm a Coloradan and Puebloan by choice. As you can see, I'm not a part of the Old Boy Network. I never have been. Out of 10 county elected officials, I'm the only woman. When I first ran for office and won, I was the first woman, along with Dorothy Butcher, to win a Democrat House seat from Pueblo County in 34 years. I know what tough is. My seat was critical in taking the majority of the State House, a majority we hadn't had since Speaker Ruben Valdez had been Speaker 28 years earlier. When I termed out, finally, the Republican Party took back my seat with an opponent named Keith Swerfiger, who I had beaten earlier, to maintain that seat, to change it to a majority in the State House. Over those years, taking on fights like water quality, remember that, Steve? First piece of legislation to be passed on water quality, most important to the state in over two decades. Being the vote to side with Republicans to save the Water Roundtable Legislation, legislation that's used today to set water planning for the entire state. Attaining floor funding for District 70, Chairman of Transportation and Energy, and, of course, protecting Para. There are many other accomplishments that we've had happen here at the State House and here in Pueblo, and I'm excited to share those with you. But my point is, experience matters, and I'm honored to be here to ask for your vote to be County Commissioner reelected.
We'll now begin the question-and-answer portion of the program. Garrison, you'll handle the first question. Do you think the current County Commissioners have properly handled negotiations with Colorado Springs on SDS and stormwater issues?
Well, while I am glad that a deal has been struck between Pueblo County, the City of Colorado Springs, and Colorado Springs Utilities, I would challenge both Ms. McFadden's leadership and participation in those agreements, and I would also challenge how great this deal really is for Pueblo County. First off, the deadline for reaching this IGA with Colorado Springs was that of Colorado Springs. Why is Pueblo County, once again, reactive to the deadlines set by Colorado Springs? Pueblo County should have set the deadlines in this IGA deal. Secondly, zero of the 71 projects in this great IGA are actually done here in Pueblo County. And zero of those 71 projects actually address past and present flooding to Overton Road. Also, a majority of these 71 projects would have had to have been done by Colorado Springs anyway, with some having little to no effect on sedimentation coming down Fountain Creek or the debris that's currently clogging our levees. For example, one of the 71 projects in this great deal is named Citadel Mall Neighborhood Improvements Project, and will be performed between 2018 and 2019, and will cost a little bit over $1 million. My question is, how do projects like the Citadel Mall Neighborhood Improvements Project benefit Pueblo County and damage done down here? Overall, this was a deal that was led by Commissioner Hart, not by you, the Chairwoman of the Board. As your County Commissioner, I will personally take a proactive and a vigilant role to protecting Pueblo County's water rights 365 days out of the year, from my first day in office to my very last. You can't hold anyone's feet to the fire if you're not at work, Ms. McFadden, to do so.
Buffy?
Would you like to rephrase the question for me? Do you want me to just take it from what I think you wanted to ask?
Well, we can do it again. Do you think that the current County Commissioners have properly handled negotiations with Colorado Springs on SDS and stormwater issues?
Thank you, Mr. Henson. Yes, I do. And first of all, I'll say that I smile because we had some really lively conversations about this agreement, and not all three Commissioners agreed all the time. So I will definitely say, all three Commissioners participated in this agreement. We inherited a 1041 permit, and there was no question, there were no projects listed in that 1041 permit. That doesn't make the 1041 permit invalid. It just meant it needed improving, and that was what was so important about the IGA. We went from a 10-year agreement in the beginning to a 20-year agreement. And I'm not going to school anyone, but I'm going to point out that part of the reason why we have so many stormwater problems here in Pueblo is because of development in the Colorado Springs area without putting the cost of development on the developers, and the people of Pueblo have had to pay. Takings, in my opinion, down the fountain, from landowners on the fountain. Why is a surface area project important? Because when you build up an area, there's no place for the water to go. The ground is gone and covered with asphalt. And our goal is to stop the stormwater flow before it ever reaches Pueblo County. That's why you do projects on the other side of the county, in El Paso County. And I would never say that negotiating a half a billion dollars' worth of projects is a failure. Over 20 years, and in fact, the original 1041 didn't get enough money to certify the levees. And in this particular agreement, the Board of County Commissioners stepped up on behalf of the City of Pueblo and got another $3 million for us to certify these levees and make sure Pueblo's safe.
Garrison, rebuttal?
I guess you can say that $460 million from the onset over the course of 20 years looks like a lot of money. The question that I point out is, where is that actually, that money actually being spent, and what is it particularly being spent on? When you really look at the deal that Commissioner McFadden signed as Chairwoman of the Board, you can see that that is not the only project. Out of these 71 projects, there is prioritization criteria. On the left-hand side, it addresses things in Colorado Springs. On the right side, there are things we're looking for that address runoff capture and sedimentation. On the left-hand side, a category you will also see is enhance the community. Whose community do those projects enhance? There are more. Park Vista for $3.7 million. Old Annex Station Drainage Improvements, $2.8 million. Briar Gate Drainage Improvements, $1.6 million, and on down the line. There are over $1.5 million worth of projects that do nothing but improve the community. And by that, I mean Colorado Springs. They do nothing for Pueblo County.
Buffy?
I would just say, the original 1041 permit had no projects in it whatsoever. The goal is to stop water before it literally gets to Pueblo. Isn't that the goal? And to suggest that this deal of almost a half a billion dollars, which is historic, and we were proud as Commissioners to actually hire Wright Water Engineering, some of the best professionals in the country, to ensure we pick good projects. We also have a seat at the table with Colorado Springs Utilities and the City of Colorado Springs. So if, over the years, we find a project isn't suitable, we can change that project. This literal agreement is fluid, and I'm very proud of Pueblo because we stood up to Colorado Springs till they cried "Uncle." And it's not done yet. This IGA is not the end of the 1041 permit. There's still more work to do, and I'm proud that we got to a half a billion dollars to protect Pueblo.
So when speaking of SDS isn't done currently, there is another round of negotiations, Phase Two of the SDS Pipeline. And with that, we should be proactive this time rather than reactive. In that phase, there will be two reservoirs that will be built, Williams Creek and Upper Williams Creek. What we should have done, and what we should be fighting for now and should have done so earlier, is trying to find a way to ensure that we can negotiate the water levels, because when those two reservoirs are built, Colorado Springs will no longer have the incentive to store the water that's currently in the Pueblo Reservoir. We need to renegotiate those water levels because a decrease in an estimated 30% of our water levels at the Pueblo Reservoir would not be a great thing for recreation or for the environment. As I stated, we need to be looking ahead, and we need to be proactive rather than reactive.
Buffy?
I think we did a great job, and there's more to do, and there's going to be more to do. And this is just the beginning of making sure Colorado Springs does what it does. And I'd ask the voters to send me back so I can be on top of them as I have been.
Okay, Buffy, you'll answer this question first.
Yes, sir.
What is your position on the petition drive to ban recreational marijuana in the city and county?
Two points. I won't sign the petition to ban marijuana in Pueblo County. If it does pass and it is certified, I'm excited the people will have a vote to decide locally what their opinion is on marijuana recreationally.
Garrison?
The issue of retail marijuana in Pueblo County has clearly divided our community into two camps, firmly for and firmly against. Now, your leadership, Ms. McFadden, has gotten us exactly to where we are today, which is divided. What Pueblo County needs right now is a leader that can bring this community back together on this key issue. Now, without a doubt, I have constituents on both sides of the issue, and what that shows is that I am listening, and that I have a problem-solving approach rather than an inflammatory one, because that is the only way that we can see where common ground can be found. When Amendment 64 passed in 2012, I would have put the recreational question to a ballot for a countywide vote immediately, rather than choosing to opt us in unilaterally. But now that the County Commissioners have opted us into recreational marijuana, there has been a large investment in infrastructure, and yes, many jobs have been created. I hope that we can move forward with the retail marijuana industry from here, primarily because of the economic activity that has been created. However, I assure you that under my leadership, if elected, the regulation of recreational marijuana will be done in a much more transparent, judicious, and equitable way. If the existing ballot initiative out there is ultimately successful, I respect the outcome of the political process and will ultimately implement the will of the voters. The bottom line is that I have a plan for both scenarios, because whomever takes office in 2017 should be able to do the job either way. Ms. McFadden, I believe your experience has taught you to make decisions, while my experience and my common sense has taught me to listen to the issue, gather as much buy-in as possible, and then make an informed and intelligent decision.
Buffy?
I'm trying to think of a scenario in 2012, the ballot issue passed in Pueblo County higher than it passed statewide, and then going back to the voters about three or four months later to say, "You didn't know what you were voting on. We're going to do it again." I just can't imagine that scenario. Second of all, yes, there have been jobs created, 1,300 at a minimum. 1,300 jobs is three times as many people that have just recently been laid off at our mill. There are many more states legalizing marijuana just this year. There's a huge likelihood it's going to pass nationwide. A likelihood it's being taken off the Schedule I, so banking can occur. And lastly, we have 20 licensed stores in Pueblo. Denver has 360, and I can tell you, Denver's not six times bigger than Pueblo, Colorado.
Garrison?
My underlying point is that if we are going to regulate the industry, let's do it right. Let's seek input from the community and do it in the most transparent and equitable way. Let's make the community feel that their voices are being heard and needs being addressed. A prime example, there's often a cited concern in the community that there isn't quite the transparency desired with how the marijuana revenue is actually spent. Folks would like to know from A to Z how marijuana revenue is spent in the community. And a prime example of how it's been spent is with excise tax money being spent to fund new golf carts, $200,000 worth of new golf carts at Desert Hot Golf Course. I don't golf, but our funding priorities are night and day.
I would like to rebuttal. Thank you, Mr. Henson. I hope you care about Desert Hot Golf Course because it's a golf course owned by Pueblo County, and for the first time in a long time, it's actually making money, and that's because we've worked so hard on it. Second of all, second of all, you know, this is a divisive issue. It passed overwhelmingly. I still can't see going immediately back to the voters and telling them, "You didn't know what you were talking about." Not only that, we hired and now have a full-time enforcement officer to go with our marijuana enforcement. But what does bother me are these illegal grows, and I can't thank Sheriff Taylor enough for going after these illegal grows, which passed under the Constitution back in 2000. We have very little oversight over illegal grows and home grows, but I can tell you that Pueblo County pushed legislation to create a registry for those caregivers growing at home, and we're using our land use regulation to try to limit the number of plants anyone can have in their home to make it easier for the sheriff to do his job.
Last rebuttal, Garrison.
You often call yourself a Truman Democrat, and one of my favorite quotes by Harry Truman is, "It's amazing what we can accomplish if it doesn't matter who receives credit." And not only did it appear that you seem to take credit for the pot bus by our sheriff, along with highway funding, I think that Kirk Taylor has done a great job with that. And I think that because of that, law enforcement, and especially the Sheriff's Department, should be funded appropriately.
Okay, we'll move on to our next question. Garrison, it's a follow-up to this. There's been some controversy about the licensing process that the county has used. What is your comments on that?
Well, I think it goes back to the Marijuana, Liquor, and Licensing Board. My thought is that that board should be a well-balanced board, representative of the areas of the community that it affects. I think that that community, that that board should be, should have a healthcare professional, somebody from law enforcement, possibly somebody from nonprofit. The idea is that it's a well-balanced board that gets as much buy-in as possible. If that board is not well-balanced, it dilutes the entire purpose of having a board.
Interestingly enough, we're the only large county in the state that actually has a hearing process for licensing marijuana and liquor stores. We modeled our licensure right after liquor stores, and I will tell you, those volunteers that took positions on the Marijuana and Liquor Licensing Board have given their time, their effort, and have continued to educate themselves on the issue, and I applaud them. Because first of all, it's tough to find people that want to put in hours and hours into a board, much less be attacked on a regular basis. The norm, the norm for licensing marijuana outlets throughout the state for larger counties is just to have it do it done by staff. We, the Board of County Commissioners, talked about that, and we decided that was not the best approach, that we did want to have citizen input and a balanced board. I'm proud of the work of the Marijuana Licensing Board, and I'm proud of the Pueblo County Commissioners because not only did we know, we were setting up a licensing schematic that would be used for Pueblo County, but it likely would be modeled throughout the United States, and we had to get it right. And it looks like we're doing a pretty good job, because we have not had many infractions when it comes to licensing recreational marijuana. I am proud, too, that we are indeed cracking down on illegal grows. And for heaven's sakes, who doesn't want to get rid of these illegal growers out of our county? We should have been doing it all along.
Garrison? Norbert? Anything else, Buffy?
I'm great, thank you.
Our next question, Buffy, you'll do this one first. In the end, elections are often about individuals as much as the issues. Why should voters elect you and not your opponent?
My investment into Pueblo isn't just for myself. Like many of you, I'm a parent, and being a single parent has been tough. When I came into office as a Pueblo County Commissioner, one of the most humbling experiences I had was having an employee come up to my office, hand me his paycheck, and tell me and show me he was only making just over $700 a month working full-time. We corrected that problem. We had too many employees who were able to go on services at social services. Highway funding, CDOT told me, no. No on I-25. No on Highway 50. In fact, Highway 50 wasn't even on CDOT's radar. I can literally go out today and touch the project being done at I-LX up to City Center Drive. Some of us still make a mistake and call it First Street. And Highway 50, the 15th most congested corridor in our state, is underway between Pueblo West and Pueblo, scheduled to get the other side done, which will be valued at over $19 million. And that wasn't easy. Getting Pueblo West Metro District to agree that I-25 was the greatest priority in this region took a lot of collaboration, and I'm proud of it. I want to continue that work. I want to work on Highway 50 East as one of our biggest business corridors. I want to make sure we're protected from Colorado Springs, and I want to ensure that we still have thoughtful budget management. When we walked in the door, it's interesting to hear I don't fund public safety. Unfortunately, the sheriff's budget went over by $1 million the first year we walked in the door, and we made sure we covered those costs for public safety. I'm honored to be a Pueblo County Commissioner. I want to go back and finish the job for four more years. I would ask for your vote.
Garrison?
As I mentioned in my opening remarks, there are stark differences between Ms. McFadden and myself, with two key differences being ethic and judgment. Since taking office in 2013... As I mentioned in my opening remarks, there are stark differences between Ms. McFadden and myself, with two key differences being ethic and judgment. Since taking office in 2013, Ms. McFadden, you may say that you fight, but you failed to fight for constituents 40 times. Because since taking office in 2013, you have missed 40 BLCC work sessions. And when you assume two work sessions a week, four weeks in a month, I would effectively say Ms. McFadden has missed five months of work. When you were applying to be County Commissioner three and a half years ago on this same stage, you said that you wanted people to walk into the office like it was a congressional office and be able to get the help they need. While people in the community are not getting the help they were promised, because when your door is closed, the lights are off, and you're not at work, people can't get the help that they need. I will also question your judgment and you ha- and how you have spent our tax-paying dollars. In particular, I would like to know why examining credit card expenses from your office, Ms. McFadden, that we see our tax-paying dollars from 2013 to today have been spent at places like Dillard's, Batteries Plus, ereplacementparts.com, and PayPal. I'm for transparent government. We want transparency, and we would like answers.
Buffy?
I smile because our research shows that commissioners should be able to take vacations, that when we entered office, we didn't just have one meeting a week, we followed the statute and went to two work, not just work sessions, Board of County Commissioner meetings a week in addition to work sessions. And on the same stage four years ago, we discussed having, we discussed having, wow, I don't think my campaign would do that. On the stage four years ago, we discussed having joint budget committee-style meetings. We met with every department and went over every line. And I'm so frugal, I don't even have a county credit card. The county does not pay for my gas unless I go to Denver, and I can also say, we do much of the purchasing for not only our office, but for the three commissioners' office when it comes to ink and toner, and also the other elected officials' office for postage. And as far as Dillard's, I'm confident that expenditure was a token to the Rotundo ladies for our Christmas present. And I bet if it was a big expense, you would have actually said how much it was. I want to go back and fight for Pueblo. There's still a lot of work to do, and it's clear, my opponent's not going to be voting for me, but I hope you will.
My question would be, why do you not hold the county credit card yourself? And you are still responsible for the expenses of your office. If you want to talk about bid- big expenditures, you have, we have those as well. Since 2013 and 2015, you spent $7,595 of our tax-paying dollars at King Supers. You also spent $1,400 of our tax-paying dollars at a local bakery, I assume, on cookies. We want transparency, and when we hear that things are tight in the public sector, we need to ensure that we're spending our tax dollars wisely from the leadership down.
Buffy?
Wow, $7,000 at King Supers. I can tell you it wasn't spent at Walmart and my office, my office, and when I came into office, most of our purchases were done at Sam's Club. I go to where UFCW is. $7,000 probably is a lot of water. We staff for everyone, and we buy for all the boards. I, why don't I want a credit card? Because I don't need one. I pay for my own stuff most of the time. Now, as far as what do we want to do in Pueblo County? We've worked on the Southwest Chief. We need to thank Sal Pace. We're gonna continue. We need to go into freight rail and make sure that the largest storage yard for the Union Pacific is improved, and we can get that Tennessee Pass line. When we're talking economic development, how many more corporations can we attract to make items in the United States, right here in Pueblo, if we have another line out of Pueblo going up and west out of Pueblo? We need more collaborative government, and frankly, you can mock me all you want, but this old gal helps the people, and I'm gonna continue to do so.
Final rebuttal, Garrison.
There is a big difference between what you say and what you do. And as I stated before, there are stark differences in my candidacy and that of the incumbent. And all that I think Pueblo County wants this election is somebody who's gonna show up to work on time, be present, and work hard. Somebody that's gonna be transparent, and somebody that's gonna be engaged in the community all year long, not just when election time comes around.
Okay, we'll go to our next question, and Garrison, you'll answer this one first. It's pretty apparent that the county needs a new jail, but it's also pretty apparent that voters aren't going to approve it. So how can the county build a new facility?
Well, there are two models under which a new jail will be built. It will be built either because the county finds a way to build a new jail, or that the county is no longer able to pass inspection and will be forced federally to do so. Now, which model do you think will have the best funding terms for Pueblo County? The proactive one, on our terms, will. Ms. McFadden stood on this stage three and a half years ago when she was first applying to be County Commissioner, and recited verbatim the role of a County Commissioner. And as I stated, there's a big difference between knowing the position and actually fulfilling the responsibilities. The Pueblo County Jail's a prime example of where the job has not been done. Because when we refer back to the Colorado revised statutes here again tonight, it states that it is the responsibility of a County Commissioner to visit the Pueblo County Jail at least once annually, if not more. And not only have you not toured the county jail a single time since taking office in 2013, but even in light of ballot issue 1A, which proposed a one-cent sales and use tax for a new, to fund a new county jail, you have never even physically seen the infrastructure that you asked taxpayers to replace. While I toured the county jail last year and this year, because I know that it is my job as a County Commissioner, not that of the sheriff, to provide a working jail to Pueblo County.
Building a new jail is certainly a dilemma. It was a disappointment when the voters did not pass the ballot initiative for the sales tax to build a new jail. And it's not surprising. It's interesting, if you went to any correctional officer in this community, they would tell you that I certainly know about detention centers. It's one of my biggest passions. I'll point out a big difference between my opponent and I, and I didn't hear anything in his answer that described how he was gonna build the jail. Our county budget is certainly strapped. Our credit is to the max, to the max. While I appreciate having built the new judicial building, it does cost at least additional $1 million to run, and our bond payments, debt and interest payments could run us between $3 and $4 million a year right off the top, which also includes the Health Department and the other bonding we did for, for ballot issue 1A back in 2009, the same year we bonded our payroll. I wasn't there then. I can tell you that anything that goes wrong in a jail, especially the HVAC system, is really important. I have a huge concern not only for the inmates, but for the staff that work in that detention center. Because any illness you can get on the outside of a, of a institution for incarceration, you can get even worse inside a closed air handling system. If I could go back in time, back when we built a new part of the jail, I would. I wouldn't have done it that way, but it's easy to armchair quarterback. I can't criticize that board for doing an expansion to that jail, and I see John Klop is here today. He might have done something differently too, today. With that being said, we're gonna have to sit down with the sheriff and find a viable plan, because it's not gonna be done within existing funding of the current budget.
Well, I would ask the question that was just posed to me about what is my plan to build a new jail. I would ask the same question to your sitting county commissioner that has been in office for three and a half years. When you first took office in 2013, that jail was already 33 years old, with a lifespan of 30 to 35 years. It is now 2016 with a jail that is currently 35 years old, overcrowded, and with no plan to build a new one or make any accommodations. In addition, either model that you look at for building a new jail is somewhere around $100 million. That's not a little expense that sneaks up on you. My plan is to have a seven-year capital improvement plan, a strong seven-year capital improvement plan, that I know of and work on through my current job as a consultant. That way that we, that way we have funding sources in place seven years ahead of time and gradually have a way to pay for the infrastructure that we need.
Well, that sounds great, but I can tell you that some days I feel like the biggest fiscal conservative in the world when it comes to our budget. We do need a new jail, that point's clear, but talking about failing buildings, I know about failing buildings, and so do all the workers that worked in the Social Services building behind the historic courthouse know about failing buildings. That building failed almost immediately after we took office. We had to evacuate the building, we had to work with our Social Services workers to make sure we maintained our work amongst the public. We are in dire straits. As far as the budget and a seven-year plan, that sounds great, but I'm not willing to do it on the backs of the employees back when we built the new judicial, new judicial building while the employees were still on furlough. We've got to make both work. We have to make our capital improvements work along with taking care of our county employees, because they are the service link to the public. We must do both. And when your credit card is maxed out, you've got to find other ways.
Okay, Buffy, you'll answer this question first. How would you describe the commissioner's relationship with other elected officials, such as the sheriff and the district attorney? And do you think there are ways to improve that relationship, particularly budgetary relationship in the years ahead?
Thank you, Steve. Great question. As I pointed out in the start of this debate, I think we know that I would never be called a part of the establishment, and as the only woman county elected official out of 10, it's, it's always a little tougher, and I do believe people desire to have gender balance amongst our elected officials. I do believe we can work with the sheriff, just like we did in 2013 when we worked with this budget. I did find it surprising that the district attorney blamed the Board of County Commissioners for his hiring practices. I found that to be unfortunate and unnecessary. Unfortunate and unnecessary, and with all due respect to the Pueblo Chieftain, had I hired my son to sweep the floors in the courthouse, it would have been on the front page. I can say that my door is always open. We all have to work together. I think one of the toughest jobs in county government is being the county clerk and the clerks that work in that office. I'm just proud that we have worked together, our balance is indeed budgeted every year. And I can speak specifically to last year, we underspent our budget and revenues came in higher. We have a small amount of breathing room, but we have to maintain cost savings to make this government work, and that includes belt tightening from all elected officials doing their best, not just the Board of County Commissioners. And I can tell you, much of our budget has been budgeted on the backs of those that work at Social Services and their savings and vacancy savings. We need to take care of people, and we need to take care of our infrastructure. Both must be done, and they need to be done by all the elected officials, not just one or not just three. We all have to work together.
Before Ms. Mc- Ms. McFadden took office in 2013, there were monthly and quarterly elected official meetings, where elected officials in the Board of County Commissioners would be informed of the operational and financial condition of the county. Needs and improvements could be discussed. There have not been any of these meetings in two years. I would ask why. In addition, since we're talking about budget and finance, which is my background, I would question the budgetary practices of the incumbent. Early on, when you were funding the, not just the elected county officials, but all the county, you had a practice of, how it currently works is you adopt a budget, and once that budget is adopted, it's a budget. When these departments were incurring cost savings from attrition, you were then mid-year taking money from those budgets and putting those somewhere. My question is where? When you realized that that wasn't a good budgeting practice, you then decided to fund all the departments across the board at 98%, assuming a 2% vacancy rate for all the departments. Anybody with a budgeting background could tell you, not all the departments in the county attrit at 2% annually. In addition, a prime example is you had the Pueblo County Treasurer's Office, who hadn't had any attrition in several years. And then you came to them and said you have to come up with 2% there in your budget. I would not just challenge whether those budget practices make sense, I would challenge the legality of those budget practices, as it's very well-known that in other counties, practices like this have often ended up in legal matters.
Thank you. I don't believe any elected official needs to have a quarterly meeting to come talk to the Board of County Commissioners, number one. We're all adults, we try to work together, and there's no question that we don't always work together well, but generally, we do. I'm proud of the work of the Board of County Commissioners. I'm also proud that every time the district attorney has come in and asked for a raise for his employees, we've worked to find that in the budget. I'm also pleased that we're trying to figure out a way with the money from the chemical depot. We asked the sheriff to go back and look at his budget to find out where we could get the most money reimbursed to us because of the CSAP program. Hopefully, that money is gonna help the entire county for what we do for the chemical depot. And I'm just proud to say that at any time, any other elected official could just come over to my office and have a meeting. We're all adults. And lastly, I'm pretty sure I'm not their mother, so if they want to restructure their budget, they're free to.
No rebuttal to that. Okay. Garrison, you'll answer this question first. Governments everywhere are trying to be more efficient. How do you feel about either partial or complete consolidation with city?
To consolidate, the city of Pueblo and Pueblo County governments would most definitely require a large investment of people, time, and resources, all of which are certainly constrained in the public sector right now. Our resources are being squeezed enough as is. While I am always supportive in finding ways that government can operate more efficiently and deliver services more effectively, I do feel that there are some preceding steps that we should consider and explore first. For example, one of the most commonly cited benefits to a city-county consolidation is that it would bridge a lack of cooperation between existing and city, city and county governments. A good idea might be then to explore the possibility of having a rotating member of city council in BLCC work sessions, and in turn, having a rotating county commissioner in city council meetings. If you want the city and the county work, to work together, then a good place to start is having both sets of leadership at the table at the same time. Trying this doesn't cost taxpayers a dime. And with attempts to consolidate city and county governments failing across the country almost three-quarters of the time, it happens primarily because voters are unable to see exactly how those efficiencies are actually realized. I look at the consolidation question from a consultant point of view. Just as in business, I would like to see specifically, what is the investment of resources needed in the first several years upfront, and what is the specific return on revest, on investment for consolidation for the out-years? Let's look to coordinate before we consolidate. Let's look to be innovative before attempting something that fails at a pretty high rate across the country currently.
I don't support city-county consolidation. We've had some lively discussions about that. I can see coordinating or utilizing purchasing agreements to do bigger purchases or to get a better buy for our dollar, but at this time, because we're still a largely rural county, I don't support city-county consolidation. The only place it seems to work is in an area where it's been completely urbanized, like Denver City Council. We can offer urbanized living, suburban living, and rural living. We have all of those options in place. And once again, Steve, I don't know who that question was for, but I don't support city and county consolidation.
Garrison, a rebuttal? Okay. We're down to our final question, and let's see, Buffy, you'll hand to this. There's an obvious appeal to expanding the Southwest Chief line to have a Pueblo stop. Do you think it's really worth the expense, and will people really use it?
That's a great question for me today, as I had to make sure my dad got to the Southwest Chief tonight, the train leaves at 7:30, and he's going home. Very excited to still have both my parents. So those of you who still have both your parents, anyway, can make me cry when I get to see my dad. Yes, I do think people would ride the Southwest Chief, and the studies show they would. And although this has been a push by the Board of County Commissioners, and every once in a while, I might chide my peer, Sal Pace, because we certainly, as the Board of County Commissioners, have worked to make sure the tire grants, both in Colorado and Kansas, have worked. I believe the ridership would go up tremendously. But I'm going to use a little bit of time to also say, not only do I believe in the Southwest Chief, I'm going to repeat again, we need to work to get Tennessee Pass open. You know, when the Union Pacific bought the Southern Pacific, the Southern Pacific could run those mountains. Those old, real, grand guys that went to the Southern Pacific could run those mountains. We need to work to incentivize and bring back those jobs and those ties to manufacturing to Pueblo. We need to focus on buying American, not only to support our community, but to support this country. So yes, I do believe ridership would go up. I do believe the investment would be worth it. And I would point out to people who don't do much with the railroad, one of the reasons why Amtrak has such a tough time is they don't own their trackage anywhere in the United States. So if you don't even own the rail, it's tougher to make a profit. I do believe we subsidize airlines and roads far more than we even do the railroad. So it would be a great opportunity for us, not only to have passenger rail, but also to bring back greater freight rail to Pueblo.
Garrison?
I think that there's a reason that Petco had named rail one of the industry clusters that it named. And the reason is because I think that it can do a great deal for tourism, a great deal for bringing not just jobs, but also high-paying careers here as well for young people just getting out of college. And to answer the question directly, I do believe, yes, that the return on investment with the Southwest Chief and continuing to work with all elected officials to make sure that that happens is a top priority for me as well.
Okay. We'll now have closing remarks from each candidate. You may recall that Buffy won the coin toss, and she elected to close the forum tonight. So we'll first have closing remarks from Garrison.
When I first started running for county commissioner almost a year and a half ago, someone told me that I had a great budgeting background, sound work ethic, and was very well-liked in the community, but said, "You need to wait your turn in line to run for county commissioner against Buffy McFadden." I looked at them and said, "The entire reason that I came into politics was because of a youth program that I started for middle school students several years ago." And when I started this youth program, I had an excellent turnout of kids. But I asked myself, "Who are the kids that really need this youth program? Is it the kids that have strong households at home and have parents that take them from one extracurricular activity to the next? Or is it another group?" And I realized that to reach the students that really needed this youth program, I had to go to them. So I would walk some of the poorest areas of our community. And I will tell you this, when you knock on the doors of those who are truly struggling, and you look into their eyes, and you look into your heart, you know that we don't have time to wait our turn in line. When children are still struggling in our homes and in our schools, we don't have time to wait our turn. When we have a heroin epidemic that is taking lives locally, daily, we don't have time to wait our turn in line. When we have people who need to provide for their loved ones and families who still can't find a job, you tell them to wait their turn in line. And I chose not to wait my turn in line to run for county commissioner, because Pueblo County deserves better now. From the bottom of my heart, it is my honor and pleasure to earn your vote for Pueblo County Commissioner in District 2, because we don't have time to wait our turn for government of, by, and for the people. Thank you very much.
Okay. We'll now have closing remarks for Buffy.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming tonight. This has been very enjoyable. I'm excited to ask for your vote again to be Pueblo County Commissioner. There's no question, I really appreciate the effort in Pueblo to get I-25 done, to get Highway 50 done. If we really want to bring good economic development to Pueblo, we must maintain our infrastructure. I proudly wear the endorsement of ASVI 1335, the largest ASVI local in the state, made up of our social services workers. I'm proud to carry the endorsement of the Southern Colorado Labor Council, the United Steel Workers, Conservation of Voters, and IBEW. You know, when I hear talk about, "We don't need the incumbent," it's a pretty good deal when the incumbent has the support of the county employees, and I wear it proudly. And I thank you, county employees. We need continued leadership. There is no question, experience matters. And I know, I feel like I'm a dinosaur up here, but I'm not. I'm a mom of a seven-year-old and a son who just graduated high school, both born here in Pueblo, Colorado. And I'm proud of them. And I want to make sure our Pueblo works for all our kids. You know, today I learned that the Career Building Academy graduated 27 kids. That's schools on the campus of Pueblo County. I learned today that they're going to be working with Judge Mays and the Summit Group to improve their programming. 27 children. 27 children who not only thought that they wouldn't go to college, many of them first graduates of high school and their entire families. That's what Pueblo's about. Pueblo's about bringing all people to the table, and that's why I'm a Democrat. You know, yes, I am a Truman Democrat, reasonable, practical, and I can make a decision. Yes, we need consensus, but we have to have someone who can stand up and make a decision and explain why and stand by it. That's tough, because sometimes even your friends get mad at you. But you do it because it's the best decision. And if there's anybody who's elected that can take a punch, I would say that's me. And if I can take it for me, you can bet, when Pueblo needs somebody to stand up and speak for Pueblo, do for Pueblo, I won't shy away from any fight. Because if I can do it for me, I can certainly do it for you. I desire to do it for you. I want to thank you tonight for watching, or maybe during the day, because I know this broadcast on the channel from PCC. I want to thank Pueblo County, and I ask for your vote. Ballots started going out this week. You need to have them in by June 28th. Thank you, Pueblo.
Good job, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you.
People are excited.
And I'm sure I'm the source of that.
I'm sure you are.
Thank you all for being so respectful tonight. Really, it's just terrific. I mean, we've seen so much animosity in debates around the country, and to see this here tonight, thank you very much. That was great.
Thank you.
And we certainly invite you to stay. We certainly invite you to stay for our second forum. We're going to take a little bit of a break so we can get set up for that. And again, thanks for joining us tonight. Good evening.